Please stand for flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pray with me. We want to thank you Father for all the blessings that you bestow on us each and every day. We want to thank you for the much-needed rain as we have been without for quite some time this summer. Our crops, the animals, our communities and reservoirs gladly accept your gift. Please be with our teachers as they continue to instruct our students in the ways that help them in their future and in life. The impact they have on them is great intellectually, spiritually, and emotionally. In addition, we would like to thank our men and women of the armed forces as they serve to protect us here at home and abroad. Please keep them safe. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Go call.
Dr. Kincaid. Mr. Newsom.
Here.
Mr. Riley.
Here.
Mrs. Trup.
Present.
Mrs. Zimmerstein.
Here.
Good. Welcome, everybody. Any comments from the public? Nothing tonight? Okay. We're going to zip over to three presentations. Union Elementary Circle of Friends.
We're waiting on our friends.
Okay. Well, we'll slip back to you.
As in Ms. Jessica?
Well, Jessica just stepped out. I think our kids had dance class until right at six, but they're just right down the road. All right.
Oh, okay. That's fine.
You having good?
So we just had a couple of kids just not doing dance class. Well, we're from Union Elementary and we are, some of us are from a program called Circle of Friends. And Ms. Janetta Swanson and I started this program last school year. And this is something that has been a dream of mine since I started obviously to get something started like this in our school. And so these are some of our students that participated last year and will be participating again this year in Circle of Friends. And I'm going to kind of just start a little slideshow here while we talk. But Circle of Friends is, the whole idea is to bring children with special needs and their peers together. It's a time that they can learn from each other. A lot of our peers will come and be role models and demonstrate social skills to them. And then our students, my students, will get to kind of practice those skills. They learn about how to act in school. And then our Janetta peers, they also get to learn a little bit about disabilities as well as they're going through this. So I'm going to have some of our friends do some introductions here and tell us a little bit about what they're getting out of. Okay? We have been learning a new communication device, so bear with us. We've been all learning how to use our new communications.
Mine. My name is. Kayla. My, my name is Kayla.
So this is our friend Emma. Leila, can you introduce your other community partner?
My name is Leila. This is my friend Leila.
And this is my friend. So we've kind of learned games as we've been getting going. And I'm going to ask Emma, Emma, what is something that you have learned or gotten out of Circle of Friends so far?
Well, I've been learning about different disabilities and how, like they, how they, like, aren't able to do stuff and all that.
Anything else you wanted to add? Ella, can you tell us something you got out of Circle of Friends? Okay. What about Piper? Heather, what is something you gotten out of Circle of Friends? Heather, what have you gotten out of Circle of Friends? Can you tell us one thing? How to learn, how to help others. Good. One of the, one of the things we do with our friends is as they get going, our special needs students sit with their age class in the morning assembly. So their friend is charged with, that's part of their duties, is to sit with them, with their friend, and then walk with them to their class. So that's a really great thing. And we're pairing them together to do activities, which they may see each other at school, they might see each other in specials, but they don't always have an activity, a one-on-one activity. So we do, if you saw the pictures, we pair them with their grade peers. So that we'll have an activity, making grandparents' cards or going outside. And one time we had them all use their talkers and the other kids did what they asked them to do, and I think we were flying airplanes. So, you know, they would use their talkers and said, "Fly," and the other kids would fly for them. So it's been very rewarding to see some friendships made and we're hoping that that will grow. We also did the Christmas parade. Yeah, last year we got to be part with leading leaders. We combined and we had a float in the Christmas parade, which we're looking forward to doing that again this year. Other things that we've done is just, like we said, talked about just having them be role models and practicing those social skills with our peers. We're having them be helpers and role models in specials. So like, third grade right now is learning recorders, so we're pairing up some of our Circle of Friends kids with our students and helping them teach each other how to play the recorder. So of course they're good. The ultimate goal is friendships outside of school. That's really what we're, that's really what we're hoping for is that their friendships last because they're going to be going to school together until they graduate. So this will probably, this will foster them to be good friends from now until they're adults. So that truly they'll have a circle in their community as they transition to adulthood. Because it's never too early to start on that.
And Jessica, Jessica Wykoff is our Stars Teacher striving to achieve real-life skills at Union Multiple Disabilities. And Janetta Swanson is our Speech Language Pathologist at Union, one of them.
Thank you so much for having us and letting us share.
Thank you for sharing. Thank you for coming. Great. Next will be superintendent's report.
Okay. Okay, the first report is on our proposed board policy changes. And if you remember, every year in September, we review the policies that may have been rescinded or changed due to legislative action or policies that the district has initiated. We do have policy writers, and that's RFR, Rosenstein, FITZN, Ringgold. And those come to us in September, actually, they came late August this year. And we review those policies by department, and they are lengthy. They are online, www.pcpus.us, and the full policies are online. There's the regular approved board policies and then the proposed. Now, you won't be approving these tonight. We'll just do a summary of the 28 policies tonight, so I'm going to try to get through these as quickly and entertainingly as possible. But if you want to go in and take a look at some of these policies, feel free to do those or feel free to ask questions. We will discuss these policies in the board wrap-up and give our community time for input. And then we can make revisions prior to the October meeting and then for your consideration for approval in October. So I've kind of got these sectioned by the section that they are in the board policy. Section one is in the Board of Education. And I know that you learned about this policy when we were at OSSBA School Board Member, Continuing Education. And basically, the basic change is upon receiving a final certified notice by the State Board of Education, the board member will have 60 days to complete requirements before the seat is declared vacant. And if you remember, prior to this change, you did not meet those guidelines, or a board member did not meet those guidelines, then the seat was declared vacant. So now you have 60 days to make sure you get your instructional and continuing ed requirement. Another change to that is that the board member is notified and the superintendent is notified previously. It was just the board member, and it was the board member's responsibility to tell the board. Section two is on Community Relations, Advertising in District Media and at District Facilities. This is a new policy. It was created due to some issues around the state. It was created to align advertising in school-sponsored publications and facilities with the district's mission. So that means that we cannot sell advertisements to go into programs or be displayed at our facilities, which advertise tobacco, drugs, alcohol, gambling. And this policy also requires approval at the district level before an advertisement is displayed or put into a program. It also clarifies specifications, the size of the advertisement. And I had one board member talk to me about our advertisements are not the same size at some of our facilities, and that is accurate. But moving forward, this policy will ensure that we're making those approvals so they will be aligned and accurate. The next policy is on District and Tribal Communication Relations. This is a new policy, and these changes are due to ESSA involving requirements for filing impact aid. And basically, this just discusses the meaningful collaboration that we have with the local tribes, and it discusses Indian policies and procedures. If you remember, last year, Chris Littlecook came and talked to you about those Indian policies and procedures that had been changed due to ESSA. Actually, it was changed after we did our board policy, so now we have a board policy in regard to that. Has to do with tribal consultation, record-keeping, who's responsible, et cetera. Then Policies and Procedures in regard to Districts and Tribal Community Relations has just been changed. It was necessary to renumber this board policy with the implementation of District and Tribal Community Relations. So there's no change actually to the policy. Policy implementing the Patriot Access to Students in Schools Act, or the PAS Act. This is a policy created on a new law regarding access of patriotic youth societies. The district is required to permit use of facilities during non-instructional time by any youth group listed as a patriotic society in Title 36 of U.S. Code. There happens to be 89 of these patriotic students in school societies. And some of these are like the Daughters or Sons of the American Revolution, the Navy Club of the USA, National Federation of Music Clubs, the Boy Scouts. And you will have to Google Title 36 of the U.S. Code to see all 89 of those. Section three has to do with administration. The first one is on wireless telecommunication devices and electronic accounts. And this title has been updated to include electronic accounts. Previously, it was wireless telecommunication devices. And these electronic accounts are email and social media accounts. If employees are using these accounts to communicate with other employees, parents, and students, or employment tasks, they must acknowledge that they are creating records that may be subject to the Oklahoma laws related to the Open Records Act. This policy also updates the use of wireless telecommunication devices while operating a district or personal vehicle. With the upgrading technology where we have so much access to Bluetooth devices, where we can do hands-free discussion while driving a school car or a personal vehicle, that is now allowed. It was formally forbidden by board policy to do that. We do encourage our employees to use their school accounts if they're ever talking about students or doing anything with school, their school email, and not to have discussions through their private social media. But I'll have to tell you, parents will message me and ask a question on my private Facebook account all the time through Messenger. Even though I'm not friends, you can do that. You can message someone who's not your friends. So I have to just know that any discussion I have is subject to open records now. And we will communicate with our employees if you approve this policy. This is a policy on grievance procedures for filing, process, and resolving complaints alleging discrimination, harassment, and retaliation. And this policy was revised with the new OCR guidelines, the Office of Civil Rights. And these guidelines provide the district the option of incorporating informal resolution, which we want to do, and also permits an appointment of a hearing officer rather than the BOE or the Board of Education during an appeal hearing. And if the Board of Education appoints a hearing officer, it's up to the board to appoint that hearing officer. The district does not appoint the hearing officer. Section three is still on administration. Service animals. Basically, wording has been updated to reflect current ADA requirements regarding service animal identification. It used to say that the service animal will have proper ID. Now it says it is recommended that the service animal will have proper ID. So that was the basic proposed change there. Reporting Threatening Behavior. It reflects new legislative requirements regarding reporting threatening behavior. All district officers and employees have a legal obligation to report verbal threats or acts of threatening behavior which have the potential to endanger student, staff, or school property. And a little bit of information on that is that the principal is the one who decides whether the behavior is threatening or not and acts in that manner. Now, it could be a direct threat, it could be an implied threat. But we are to call law enforcement officers, which we basically did before this policy anyway. We do have a new policy on social media, and this policy specifically addresses existing or new electronic and digital communication and official expectations of staff, whether at work or personal. And fair or not, employees of the school are held to higher standards, and we expect them to be positive role models. And no private exchanges between students, no photos on their personal featuring students, and that all copyright laws are respected and that all information is confidential in regard to school. And we have lots of issues many times with social media. As you know, this social media can be very positive and can also be negative. Basically, if we have an issue where there is something that is probably not a positive posting on a personal social media account, we just talk to the employee and ask them to take that down, and we haven't had anybody not do that so far. Section five is on Business Management. The first one has to do with purchasing. Wording has been updated to authorize the superintendent or the superintendent's designee to award a contract for a supplier service without competition when it has been determined there is only one source for the supplier service. And an example of that would be Evans &amp; Associates. They're the only ones in our area who do asphalt work. Doesn't come up very often. Intellectual Property is 5.0-3.0. It is a new policy, and this just basically says that if something is created by a district employee or under district sponsorship, it belongs to the district. Some of the things that I can think of just right off the top of my head are the Wildcat Way, our logo, that type of thing. Sell of School District Surplus Property. This was previously titled Disposition of Obsolete or Unserviceable Supplies and Requirements. And this policy just basically outlines the appraisal process and the procedures for selling district-owned property. This can be real estate or personal property, and it's pretty much outlined step by step what we do to take that action. Section five is still on Business Management, the Use of the School District Trademark. With our logo agreement that we approved last month, we felt that we needed use of school district trademark policies. This will just ensure that the guidelines are followed regarding the use of logo agreement that we approved last month. Section six has to do with Personnel. This is a policy that we initiated. It's the Degree Preparation Stipend. There's not yet been a number assigned, and there won't be until we consider this for approval. We talked about this in Finance Committee. This is for the district to pay a one-time stipend to support employees who obtain a bachelor's degree in education and become an Oklahoma-certified teacher with PCPS. The stipend will be paid once the employee obtains certification, and it's not emergency certification. This would be standard, alternative, or provisional certification. And actually, this is part of our negotiated agreement. We do pay our current staff who are working toward a higher degree $1,600, a one-time payment after they've completed 16 hours toward their next degree level. We are hiring so many of our support employees as teachers who have a bachelor's degree. And when they work toward their degree, they have to do proficiency testing, and it's very expensive. So we would like to propose that if the support employee goes to work for us, obtains a regular certificate, not an emergency, and we hire them, that we pay the one-time stipend. Family and Medical Leave Act. This is for all personnel, support, and certified. Wording has been added to inform employees the district may conduct off-site surveillance of their activities in order to combat misuse of FMLA. And if found to be misusing, the employee is subject to all disciplinary action approved by law. We can't go off-site surveillance unless we have reasonable suspicion that the employee is misusing FMLA leave. If it's a recurring pattern, or if we have some substantiated evidence, like a picture on Facebook or something like that, we can now do off-site surveillance. Military Leave, all personnel. Basically, for certified, the revision used to reference 240 hours as dealt, as has been deleted regarding leave without loss of pay to now 30 working days. The working day might not be eight hours. So that has changed to 30 working days rather than 240 hours. Additional wording has been added for the support outlining leave provisions who are a component of the Armed Forces in the U.S., including National Guard, when the employee is ordered to active duty. More Personnel, Proposed Changes. Vacation, 12-month employees. These revisions were initiated by the district to clarify use of vacation. And our former policy said that five days of vacation had to be used within the year. And our practice is within the fiscal year. So we just changed the verbiage to within the year to within the fiscal year. And when we sent that policy to our policy writers, they found another little issue. They said you can't carry over vacation. So we're going to be in the process of notifying our employees of how we use, how we will utilize that vacation. It's like spending money from one fiscal year to the next. Sick leave, you can carry over from one fiscal year to the next, but not vacation. And as we outline how we're going to move, how we're going to change our policy in regard to vacation, I'll be sure to keep you informed on that. And our policy writers tell us we have a year to work this issue out. Breastfeeding Policy. This is a new policy. This policy outlines provisions for any employee who is breastfeeding her child for up to one year after the child's birth. And some of the things that we have to do is we have to provide time for the mother to breastfeed her child. We try to make it concurrent with any break they may have, which is their lunchtime, their planning period. According to Fair Labor Standards, this is not paid leave, so it's understood that if they have to have time out of their instructional time in the classroom or during the contract, that they make it up at another time, either during their lunchtime or before or after school. Suspension, Dismissal, and Nonreemployment of Teachers. Basically, the policy is updated to meet state statutes regarding the suspension, dismissal, and nonreemployment of teachers. And our former policy didn't spell everything out step by step for all of these actions. It just said we will follow state guidelines. And in the year, school year 2017, 2018, there were some changes in regard to TLE. And a career teacher, a probationary teacher can become a career teacher after three years if they have three years of consecutive ratings of superior on TLE. If not, they are automatically deemed career after year four. There is another portion of this policy that states if we have a career teacher and they have two years of ineffective, then we non-renew. And we don't have any career teachers with even one year of ineffective. Professional Organization Payroll Deduction, 6.9. Wording's been added to state that a request may be made in writing to terminate or initiate payroll deductions to a professional organization. Can include communication by email or facsimile, or a fax can be sent to us. We have five days to take care of this, or we are responsible for paying the dues even if the employee has made the request. Five days or by the next payday, whichever is the fewest number of days. So that could have some monetary issues for us if we do not cease the request immediately. Federal Programs. Language has been added to include required contract verbiage for contracts paid for using federal funding. And you all know that you approve many contracts for special education services frequently for the district, SLPs, SLPA's, school psychologists. Basically, this just says if for any reason they lose certification, we are not bound by that contract anymore. Our special ed people are paid with federal dollars. Moving on to Students. Truancy. And I've talked to you about this before. The city of Ponca City is proposing an ordinance regarding truancy. Our policy has been updated to include the option of reporting unexcused absences to our S- our SRO or SROs. Previously, we referred those to the district attorney, to the county. Now, this gives us a little more leverage with our SROs, even if a child is just roaming the halls and not going to class. We can report that to an SRO. Now, the city has shared the ordinance with us, and we have shared a copy with you, but they are not going to approve the city ordinance until after this board approves the ordinance. So, it would be sometime in October if you move to approve this proposed policy. Abuse, neglect, exploitation, and trafficking. This was formerly entitled child abuse. The policy has undergone extensive revision to name any major change or type of activity that is subject to mandatory reporting to DHS. And what the sad part about this is are some of the things that our students are subjected to. We do report on a lot of the items mentioned. It does fall in the child abuse category, but it's specified out. And some of the issues that are spelled out are contributing to the delinquency of a minor, incest, child trafficking, maliciously enticing children, forcible sodomy, forcing a child to participate in child pornography. So, those activities are spelled out for us now. And used to, it was previously in our previous policy, the employee was to talk to the principal. Now, the employee has to make the call to DHS immediately, right then and there, and they will receive a confirmation from DHS, that number from DHS that will be reported to the principal. Our practice is if we know any of this is going on and we suspect it, we file a claim with DHS. Once it's reported to the principal, we typically call the police and, well, not typically, we always call the police and have them investigate as well. The direct threat policy has changed. It's been revised to include more guidelines of determining and appealing an adverse student action grounded in a direct threat determination. It also spells out the actions that are taking for, taken for special ed students. And if you think about an adverse effect, it could be that the parent may send them to an in-treatment facility. And one of our board members asked me about a section of that policy that says the superintendent, the parent can appeal to the superintendent, and the superintendent's decision is final. That's in regard to interim suspension, like if they are at an inpatient treatment facility. So, it doesn't negate our suspension policy in which, once the superintendent makes a final decision, that the student or the parent cannot appeal to the board. So, this is just in regard to interim suspension. Administration of medication in school. This is a revision that reflects legislative changes regarding the application of sunscreen. And I know that you all learned about that at OSSBA as well. We can administer sunscreen to a child if the employee has had the medication dispensing training and if it's documented. Now, a student can self-administer sunscreen if the proper documentation is completed with the school nurse. And right now, there's only three things that they can self-administer for, and that's anaphylaxis, asthma, or sunscreen. And I was having a discussion too with a board member in regard to medical marijuana, and we were supposed to receive some guidelines from the state, some frequently asked questions from the state. And guess what? They came today, this afternoon, and Oklahoma has not approved for students to be able to self-administer medical marijuana. Discrimination, harassment, and retaliation. This is revision in accordance with new OCR, Office of Civil Rights Guidelines, about sexual harassment complaints and investigations among students, student to student, student to employee, employee to student. Any questions about all those? I'm sure you have a lot. Our school attorney?
I've got a comment.
Okay.
This policy 7.7-1.0 on immediate reporting of abuse of minors probably needs to be emphasized that the law and the proposed policy do not require notification of parents.
Okay. I think it says that in the policy. I just didn't put that in my summary.
Parents are often very surprised to learn that. And in every situation that I get dragged into, the parents are just outraged that they weren't notified. Well, don't talk to the school. Talk to somebody in control of those decisions.
Typically, when we call the police, the police do reach out to the parents.
But I thought I'd announce that since we're at this stage where we're...
Good point, Gary.
I mean, and then also, as a corollary to that, it does not require, if there's, if the parents are split between custodial and non-custodial, there is no requirement or duty on the part of the school district to notify the non-custodial parent.
Either parent.
Yeah. So, public be warned, if abuse be reported regarding your child, you're not going to find out about it from the school district. Now, that's not to say that I like that as a school attorney or that the school district likes it. That's just what they have imposed on us.
And on that same one, have you told, have you, you know, told the teachers that they are to report it directly instead of going to the principal or going to the counselor?
Well, as soon as it's approved, we will. They do know that they have to call DHS, that they must report it, so we will convey that to our employees once your consideration of approval or disapproval.
Don, one comment. I spent most of the morning reviewing all these policies, and I had quite a few concerns, quite a few questions. I gave Shelley a list of them, and probably over the next month before the next meeting, hopefully, all those things will be worked out. But it's not quite as easy as just looking at these, saying, you know, they're all, they're laydowns, because there's some real concerns in some of them.
And again, like I told Robin, we do rely on our policy writers, the attorneys, to guide us in the right direction so that we're meeting law to protect the district and protect the board and to protect our students and staff. So, some of these we have to change because of legislation, but some are just, they notice that they need to be changed, or if OCR verbiage has changed, just like the vacation policy. We initiated that to clarify that it was the fiscal year for use of five calendar, five vacation days, and they, they said, yes, you shouldn't be carrying over vacation days, and you make a mistake and you correct it. They said we do have a year to correct that issue.
So, you don't let any of them carry over vacation days, or you're not going to let anyone?
We will this year because we can't just throw that on them. These are 12-month people.
Right.
Now, there's some things that we can do. We can roll over their carryover to sick leave, because that is allowable, their vacation. And we do that now, actually. I never use all my vacation days, and probably the 12-month people in here do not either. So, we do now roll those over to sick, so...
So, if they don't use them and they don't want to roll them over to sick days, are they paid for them?
That is an option we could take, but that would be quite expensive. Everybody would likely want to be paid.
So, they just lose them? So, they just lose them?
We're not going to let them lose them. We'll roll them over to sick leave. Because there's, we have some policy that if they've been with us for so many years and they retire, they're paid back so much per day of sick leave. And you know 120 sick leave days counts a year toward retirement, too. But most people, by the time they get to retirement, do have those 120 days, but not Not all of our people have the 120 days when it comes to retirement.
And don't you still have to be here so long to get paid for them?
Yes.
I missed out on that. Darn it.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Next thing is attendance awareness.
It's Awareness Month.
All right. In case you didn't know, September is Attendance Awareness Month, and I've got just some facts regarding attendance for you. Absenteeism in the first month of school certainly indicates poor attendance during the school year. So, if you think about it, half the students who miss two to four days in September go on to miss nearly a month of school, and that's a lot of days. So, we're really emphasizing attendance awareness during September. Five to 7.5 million U.S. students miss nearly a month of school each year, and that's across the United States, and that's no exception here in Ponca City as well. One in every 10 kindergarten and first grade students miss nearly a month of school. Poor attendance can influence whether children read proficiently by third grade, which affects RSA. And we have some strong indicators that show us that students who are on RSA or may be considered for retention miss or have a lot of chronic absenteeism. By sixth grade, chronic absenteeism becomes the leading indicator that a student will drop out of high school. So, obviously, we want to target this at a young age. And research shows that missing 10% of the school year or about 18 days negatively affects a student's performance. And if you think about the 18 days, or in school, nine months, that's just two days a month can equal the 18 days. We do have a policy that says students may be retained if they miss more than the 18 days, but retention, we try to, we try to work with parents so that that doesn't happen and set goals with parents. And if you think about it, for many of our students, especially the younger ones, attendance issues are out of a student's control. It could be they have unstable housing, they may not have transportation, their parents may not get up and bring them to school. So, some of the activities that we're doing this month is we've got banners that you may have seen at the Fifth Street Sonic and by the RC Bank on 14th that indicate this is Attendance Awareness Month. We are advertising on social media, our district official social media. We're advertising on marquees at the sites. We're sending letters home and informational brochures home. Terry has done the Wildcat Chat to talk to our parents about the importance of attendance and some of the things we're doing in Ponca City during Attendance Awareness Month. We're displaying posters at each site that are attractive posters that may give a fact to the students and to the parents. It's prominent, like drop-off, pick-up spots that indicate to students some of the cold hard facts about chronic absenteeism. We're discussing attendance facts and educating parents during curriculum nights and back-to-school nights. And something that we hear often from our parents happens to be that, well, I called my child in, but we talk to them about the difference between chronic absenteeism and truancy. You can still miss four days a month and call your child in for four doctor's appointments, but it still leads to chronic absenteeism. So, we talk about that with our parents. We set goals with our parents. We do goal-setting to help them. If there's an issue with transportation, we're going to do everything that we can to make sure that child gets to school. I've known teachers who send an alarm clock home with students before. We're having attendance contests and activities at the sites, and we're doing attendance incentives. I know at some of our sites, one of our elementary sites, the principal is popping in rooms, and if everybody's there that day, she may just randomly give them a treat. You probably saw last year in one of our press releases that Trout gave away a bicycle. They had a drawing for everyone who had perfect attendance. Lincoln is doing, will spin the will, the Wheel of Fortune for attendance incentives, and if they're there, they get a certain prize. And our site principals and our teachers are really involved with pushing attendance. And something that we're going to do, if you all vote for the truancy policy in which the, we can contact the SROs and the county, we're going to have the SROs visit the elementary sites and East and West, which I didn't put there, and talk about the proposed city ordinance. And I think it's important that our students know who our SROs are, because we do call them if situations arise at the location where they are not cited, where they're not stationed, and we can capitalize off the lip sync challenge that you may have saw with our police officers. Our school SRO is one of the stars. So, after this is approved, or if it's approved on both ends, from the Board of Education and from the city, we're going to have our SROs go to all of our sites and just talk to them a little bit about the ordinance. But it won't be in September, because the policy won't be approved in September. Any questions in regard to Attendance Awareness Month? Okay.
Thank you. Item five, the consent agenda. Make a motion to approve our consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion by Judy and seconded by Nancy to approve item 51 through 54. Any discussion? None, roll call.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Tru?
Aye.
Mrs. Zemrashid?
Aye.
Dr. Kim Cade?
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you. Next item will be 6.1. Consider take action on the following district's financial reports. We had a lengthy, well, it wasn't too bad.
Wasn't real bad.
Under 15 pages.
I'll move to approve 6.1.
Thank you, Ryan.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Judy. Any other discussion? None, roll call.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Tru?
Aye.
Mrs. Zemrashid?
Aye.
Dr. Kim Cade?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye. Next item will be 6.2. Consider take action on the estimate needs for the fiscal year 19. Our yearly thing that we do.
And if you look at your handout, it's, if you look at page 17, our net assessed value is $287 million. Last year, it was $283 million, $283.6 million. So, our net assessed valuation is up $3.3 million. Our mill levies for this year are at $22.54. And the estimate of needs is for our sinking fund to ensure that we can make our bond And we had just received these from our tax commission people, so, from our auditors. You didn't have this information at committee meetings, but it's good that our net assessed valuation is up. We try to keep our little mill levies close to 22. We're at 22.4. Brenda, weren't they a little bit lower than that last year?
They were 21.6.
21.6. So, they hover right around 22 mills.
I think we were expecting this one to creep a little.
We sold a lot of that.
Yeah.
Something I was writing in my book.
Yeah.
It'll go down.
All right, good. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve 6.2.
Thank you, Judy. Do you have a second?
This is just law that it has to be approved by the board. We can't change our net assessed valuation or our mill levies. It's just law that it has to be approved.
Thanks, David. Any other discussion? Robin, you had a question? Or did I hear you?
No, I seconded.
Oh, you did? Oh, okay. Either one, whoever, him or David. Sorry. Roll call.
Mrs. Tru?
Aye.
Mrs. Zemrashid?
Aye.
Dr. Kim Cade?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you. Next item will be 6.3. Consideration to take action on the following contracts agreements for the 2018 and 19 school year. Agreement with Servapro, agreement with Kids Shine LLC, the Mad Science, agreement with Train, indeed, an agreement with Automation and Integ... Is that for our... Is that for, it's on a building automation, isn't it? The building on the HVAC? Like to have a motion for A through D.
I'll go ahead and motion it.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Nancy, and second from David. Any other discussion?
Brad, I thought, I thought this was like 24,000, and the 41 is including next year's too, wasn't it? On the...
The 24 is just west. That's to be rid of that antiquated machine handle over there. And the 41 is to bring those up so our systems can talk to it. That's a different vendor. That's KMC. So we operate our buildings on two different systems, Train and KMC.
So, so really, this is the total cost of two agreements?
Yes, 67,000.
Where it says one agreement for 41,2. The project is 41,2, but it's actually two different contracts, isn't it?
No. No, it's not. 41,2 is for three elementary sites and East Middle School. 23 is only for West.
All with the same vendor?
No.
Two different.
West is one vendor, three elementaries, and East is another vendor.
Then that, I don't think we can do a 41,2 for a single contract, can we? We can do it for a project.
No, it's... Yeah, we can do it.
So long as it's on over 10,000 on the regular agenda.
I mean, I don't have a problem with what we're doing, but we're spending $41,000 with two different people, two different companies. What are the company's names?
Train is one, and Automated, Integrated, Integrated Automation is the other, which is our KMC vendor.
So the Automation Integrated is really the only $24,000, isn't it? And the Train's the other one?
41.
41 is Automated, Integrated. That's 41,000 for, to upgrade their KMC system on four of our sites. And Train is another whole vendor with a different system. They operate the same way, except they're completely separate.
But we haven't... But we haven't done it yet.
No, the Train went over West, that's probably more critical than any of them, because we can't talk to those machines at all because of that, that piece of equipment that does not work. One upgrades the KMC products that we have in the district, so we can talk to them through our intranet. It's a backnet, because the old system that we had before with KMC doesn't operate correctly, doesn't talk to it without, we'll act with a better term. Train, that piece of equipment is the brain box for part of that school. And then a lot of the work can only get parts for it. It's, as a matter of fact, Train hasn't seen what these have existed for several years. So they're kind of excited about it. They've never seen one last as long. We put it in 1988.
What runs the high school?
Both, KMC and Train.
Both of them?
Yes. It's difficult to do that. It's not possible by any means, because we've been doing it. At West and at High School, we've got two different systems. We just have to do them separately, separate computer software, separate systems, separate communications, but it's all basically the same idea.
I still didn't answer your question, whatever it was.
I'm still confused, but go ahead.
So, so the total is 64, 620. They're two separate.
They are two separate, so you got 24,000, you got 42,000. Completely separate, other than the same idea.
But the 24,000 were not approved.
Yeah, hopefully not.
That's, that's our...
Oh, that's the one above it.
That's our critical.
Let's see.
Okay. So we're spending 64,000 to computerize it.
That's correct, two separate agreements.
Okay. I'm okay, Don.
Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
Dr. Kim Cade?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truett?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item will be 64. Consider take action on the following change orders. Change order A, change order number one for the Roosevelt Elementary Parking Lot Expansion Project, and B was the consideration to take action on the change order number one for the old football locker room project. I'd like to have a motion to approve these two items. For these change orders for 6.4.
I'll make a motion to approve the two change orders for, at 6.4, A and B.
Thank you, Judy. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Nancy. Roll call.
Dr. Kim Cade?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truett?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
I was reading and aying at the same time, I'm sorry. I just wanted to be you today.
Wanted to answer for Judy.
Sorry, Judy.
Next item will be 6.5. A motion to convene an executive session for the following purposes, to discuss the possible termination, reassignment, resignation, and employment of personnel on the attached detailed personnel report, and discuss confidential conversations with the board's attorney concerning pending claims and litigations. And we do need a little...
I have one short thing.
Little executive session, if we could?
One short thing.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve an executive session.
Thank you, Judy. Do you have a second?
I will second it.
Nancy went really bad in there.
I'm just trying to eye everybody's. Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truett?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
Dr. Kim Cade?
Aye.
Motion passed. We're in executive session. We'll return to open session. Minutes were kept in executive session. 6.8. Consider take action on recommendation for termination, reassignment, resignation, employment of the personnel. Do you have a motion to approve for 6.8?
I move to approve 6.8.
Thank you, David. And second from Robin over there. Roll call.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truett?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
Dr. Kim Cade?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye. Motion passed. I don't believe there's any new business.
No new business.
How about an adjournment?
I'm going to adjourn.
I'd second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great week.